Next on the agenda, conditional use permit, County of Warren for a fire and rescue training facility. Ms. Logan.
The County of Warren is proposing a conditional use permit for a fire and rescue training facility. Property is located on ESA Lane off of John Marshall Highway. Property has approximately 107 acres in size. Zoned agricultural. In the packet you have a statement of justification from Warren County Fire and Rescue. They do currently use this site for three classroom trailers for classroom and support space. The department is now seeking this live fire and practical training support building, which consists of a 75 by 75 concrete pad with a two-story building constructed of basically intermodal freight containers, shipping containers. The proposed building will consist of approximately 2,180 square feet of floor space and will include two live fire burn cells. The Board of Supervisors had a work session in June regarding this item. The property is proposed to be accessed off of ESA Lane, and we did receive comments from VDOT that the entrance is adequate for this use. The county did acquire this property in exchange with the school board in 2015 for an exchange for the 31 acre school site along Leitrone Parkway. The Planning Commission did recommend denial after having a public hearing, and those meetings are in your packet. Again, since that meeting, we did have a work session with the Board of Supervisors, and Fire and Rescue Department gave a presentation. And after a meeting with some property owners, adjoining property owners, I have recommended several new conditions. The applicant's shot compliance with all Warren County Health Department, VDOT, Warren County Building Inspections, Regulations, and Requirements. A site plan shall be prepared and approved by the Warren County Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit showing the building, parking, outdoor lighting, and any applicable zoning requirements. The county shall install an eight-foot privacy fence along the property line of ESA Lane and the pool area on the property identified on Tax Map 30 as parcel 13, as agreed upon by the, with the adjoining property to address privacy concerns. County shall install a speed reduction bump at the old gate location on ESA Lane. The use of the facility for live fire training will not exceed 20 days per calendar year. The Fire and Rescue Department will provide the adjoining property owners with the one week notice of any live fire training activities. The county will be responsible for the maintenance of the road noted as ESA Lane. Use of the facility shall be limited to Warren County Fire and Rescue, Town Department Royal, Police, Warren County Sheriff's Office, and training of local industry and public safety agencies. If you have any questions, I'm happy to have, to answer them, and the Fire, we do have representatives from Fire and Rescue here as well.
Say we'll have a question for Ms. Logan. Hearing none. Public hearing is now open. Would the applicant, a member of the department, want to come forward and speak?
Jerry Laattico, 157 Runmount View Road, Front Royal. Also serves as the captain of Special Services Fire Marshal's Office, Training of Department of Fire and Rescue Services. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board and the county staff, we appreciate the opportunity to be here before you this evening, but I gotta give it to you on a somber note, Chief Committee sends his regards, but we currently have all eight of our volunteer fire companies, as well as multiple mutual aid companies work in a significant fire incident in the Lakefront Royal community in Upper County. So we are sure, certainly wish we had a better representation here. We do have some of our volunteer fire and rescue leadership here to talk about the project. But I just want to reiterate to the, to the Board that we did not take this project lightly. We've been working on this project since the 2009 Springs Day Consultant Study, originally proposed in a six-acre tract in Rockland Park. We went before the Planning Commission, certain restrictions were placed on that parcel. And ultimately, the price tag of that project would be, in today's dollars, an estimated $800,000. And I really think that that's low. Certainly looking at our current training needs, our programs and services, ESA Lane was very attractive to us because it had the roadway infrastructure already in place, it had the classroom buildings already in place, water and septic already in place. So that's a significant cost savings to the taxpayer. In addition to using the intermodal freight container concept, we are able to fund this project out of our existing budget using state fire program funds. So we're not asking for any additional funds right now to fund this project. It's been envisioned for us, so we can certainly do that without asking the taxpayer or the Board for any additional funding. Certainly looking at our fire and rescue staff operating on this house fire today, we were there since five o'clock. I left the fire scene to come here and be before you and answer any questions that you may have. This is a vital project to the success of our fire and rescue system. We showed you the benefits of it in work session. And the moral of the story is, is we want to be good neighbors. While we understand that some people may be objectionable to it, we are going to strive to be good neighbors with our surrounding property owners. We were the ones that suggested the conditions of use, just to show how, how much of a good faith effort we want to make sure that we strive to be good neighbors. If that, I'll answer any questions, or I'll be back before you as a taxpayer.
Does anyone have a question? I've got one. I came up and visited the property with you the other day, and one of the benefits you did mention, our electric lines are buried.
Yeah, so the, the site is relatively flat, whereas the six acres allotted in Rockland Park, the electric infrastructure, the municipal water infrastructure from the town, the septic system, the underground utilities, all of that infrastructure is already there. If we proceed with this in Rockland Park, that $800,000 number as an example, the Planning Commission imposed a restriction on Class A fuels. To do our burn building, irregardless of what type of burn facility we use, that would be an additional $300,000 cost minimum, just for the props and electronic equipment to move to a propane or LPG prop. So that automatically, just the props themselves takes the project out of reach.
Yeah, it was a former high school location.
Former school locations for high school students. It sat vacant for many years until we started utilizing it. We had to go in and refurbish it. The buildings were practically falling down. So we, we've made a lot of labor and capital improvements in the project, yes.
In fact, one of the buildings, the homeless man came down and moved down.
That's correct. It was, it was almost to the point of disrepair that we were able to salvage it, and now it's a pristine classroom that we're very proud of.
And down the street, there was a, the school system uses it as a, I guess, school bus?
School ma, school maintenance was using it, I believe primarily to work when there's small windows, lawnmower equipments to do repairs, that type of equipment storage.
And so, how many acres, 100?
107, but we're certainly not going to use 107.
Ms. Logan?
Yes, just for clarification, if you could elaborate a little bit, when you're using it for a burn building, what type of smoke might people see?
Yes, ma'am. So if you remember in our work session, we are bound by NFPA 1403 requirements. NFPA is ultimately the guidelines that we have to follow for training activities. We're bounded by those requirements, and we are limited to the fuels that we can use for live fire training. I showed you a configuration of a singular bale of straw with pallet stacked around it. So you imagine a bale of straw burning, it produces a very dense white smoke in the building, but as it exits into the atmosphere, it dissipates pretty quickly. The other attractive aspect of ESA Lane is the natural vegetation surrounding ESA Lane in the adjoining properties. That, that woodland is going to serve as a natural filter per se, if smoke is going to lay low. We were able to show the Board a, a video of one of these facilities in use, and you could see how rapidly the smoke was dissipated as it exited the building. We're bound by that. We cannot and will not burn any additional fuels inside of that. We're limited to how many times we can burn, how long we can burn. So while we say that we may burn for an eight-hour day, we are limited to 10, what we call 10 evolutions. So it's not like we set this building on fire and it burns constantly for that eight-hour period. Each evolution, we estimate lasts about 10 minutes. So if you look at it, out of an eight-hour day, we're physically producing smoke for about 100 minutes of that time.
And no black smoke?
No black smoke, ma'am. It's, it's not like we're part of tires or cars or anything of that nature.
One question, if you would, Ms. Logan. How vigilant will you be on a wind direction when you have a burn like this? Because you have residential area on one side and a mountain on the other.
Absolutely. So we, as I noted too, we want to be good neighbors. If wind conditions are in fact strong, so NFPA gives us certain requirements, if wind conditions are over a certain speed, we cannot hold a live fire training. But also too, we would take into consideration that if it was going towards the populated area, and we thought that it was going to adversely affect our neighbors, we would not hold that training event. We would postpone it, reschedule it, and move forward.
Does anyone else have a question?
You're anticipating 20 days a year for a burn facility?
Massive. I don't think that we would realistically achieve that number. You know, we would probably see, because it's a new shiny toy, we would see an increased use in the first year or two years. But if you look at our, if you look at our typical training schedule, a volunteer fire academy holds four burns, so four live fire evolutions. That is what we are mandated to do by state requirements, state certification requirements. The rest, we do two burns a year for Exalta and their fire brigade in a public-private partnership. So that puts us at six. So that gives us ultimately 14 additional burns to build in for our volunteer system and career system. We'll never get close to that number, right now.
Are you going to know that you'd go to neighborhood counties for the burn training as such, but this is just going to be solely for paid department, the volunteer department? I think you mentioned syrup sheriff or?
So this is, a live fire training is, is going to be earmarked for our career and volunteer fire and rescue departments, associated public safety, Chester Gap, Middletown. Since we run calls frequently together, we're going to want to train together. But we would not, right now, we have to go and lease Shenandoah County's burn building for the day to do our training. Shenandoah County wouldn't do that because they have their own building. We talked to you at length about ultimately, the other localities around us have their own facility, and we are dependent on their facility, which becomes problematic due to travel time, et cetera. So the other aspect too, is we talked about the distances. If you look at the site distances from our facility to any residential areas in comparison to Winchester City, Frederick Counties, we're almost 800 feet away from the closest residential property, where Winchester City, Frederick Counties is 300 feet away. So if you look at that, and there is no natural buffer, it's literally open field chain link fence separating the facility and the residential property. So we don't envision that that's problematic for them. We've trained there many times on a, on a Saturday, so the smoke production, noise production, you know, reaching out to their training divisions, they haven't had any problems or concerns from, from the neighborhood community.
Another thing, like you said, is here in Warren County, you were down in Shenandoah County, doing a training session, and you had, I don't know what the incident is, but it sounded like it was pretty substantial. You had an incident like you had tonight, you have a lot of your crews out, out of town, and that makes it difficult to.
Well, it, it doesn't make it feasible for us to do continuing educational live fire training. We don't have that ability. We cannot take our units and our staffing out of county to do this type of training for that very incident. The more people we take out of county, to give you an example, to do a live fire training evolution, to meet the 1403 requirements, at a minimum, you're going to have to have 11 instructors, for safety officers, incident command staff, crew leaders. So that's 11 people. That's not really involved in the learning experience. Now looking at the resources for the actual learning event, we just don't have the staffing available today to make that feasible. So the unfortunate reality is, is if we put a new volunteer through a fire academy, they get their four live fire training evolutions. And ultimately, unless they get lucky, which I say that facetiously, because we never want anybody to have a fire, but that volunteer responder may go years before ever being exposed to a live fire situation. So how do we keep that volunteer, how do we keep that member trained and engaged in the space level skills that they learn and expand on those skills? Just don't have that opportunity.
Which you had an example, the recent fire that was on 15th Street, and you told me that there was something initially that happened because of the training, they knew not to move in, and what would have happened if they moved in?
So that, that scenario I gave you is certainly, on the, the most recent fire we had in 15th Street is, our, our crews got there, we had a significant fire burning in the basement and the attic space. It started on the exterior of the home, spread into the basement, the attic space. When crews got there, they opened the door, they immediately recognized the conditions and made the decision not to enter. Approximately two feet inside the front door, the floor was gone. So certainly, had they have advanced or tried to suppress that fire, we would have had a seriously catastrophic incident. The flipside scenario is, many years ago, if you remember, we had a hotel fire down South Royal Avenue. We had a training event in county in a practical exercise setting, doing vehicle fire. So we have a, we've gone into a partnership with our surrounding counties. We were able to bring that prop in county. We had fire academy class going on, that is a labor-intensive fire, so we were able to stop class and move the class to the scene of the fire incident, and utilize those staff members as resources for the fire. Ms. Carter, if we were in Shenandoah, Winchester, that just would have not been feasible for us to do.
And you've mentioned you're being accommodated, want to be a good neighbor. There was a couple things you shared, that where the gate used to be, you're planning on putting a speed bump there?
So yeah, it's a, it's a significant slope. It's, it's a good little hill coming off of ESA Lane. So certainly, when we train teenagers from a volunteer standpoint, or even some of our career members, speed is a factor, and you know, at 10:30 at night, or you know, at four o'clock in the evening after an eight-hour day, these people want to go home, they have a tendency to speed. There is a house pretty close to ESA Lane. We have talked to that neighbor, that is that neighbor's concern. So we certainly said, well, we understand your concern, and we would put a speed hump in, or speed bump in to force our folks to slow down. We've also adopted internal policy that if you have driving complaints received on you, and it becomes a problematic issue, that certainly, we have to take the appropriate recourse, because we want to be good neighbors.
And presently, you already use that road anyway. You're, if this doesn't get approved, you're still going to use those three buildings for classes?
We sort of hope so.
Right. But there's a present homeowner that had concerns about a swimming pool being, being seen from the road, and what are you going to do about that?
So we're trying to make accommodations with him. We talked about the installation of a, a natural vegetation barrier or a privacy fence. So I think that we've agreed upon a privacy fence. Certainly he has a family, they want to enjoy the privacy of their pool. The pool sits probably 15 feet off the roadway, so they would feel more comfortable if they were able to enjoy their, their pool. And you know, they don't mind any apparatus coming by, but they're just worried about if, if somebody is enjoying the pool, or et cetera. So they, they had privacy concerns, so we can.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? If not, Smouse, does anyone sign up?
Yes, sir.
Blaine Keller, I live at 11 Mount Vernon Court. Thank you for having an opportunity to speak. I do appreciate Jerry's effort in this, getting it built on top of that hill. Conquer and divide. The last time we had a planning zoning meeting in this room, half that road back there was full of people against this. And so what do you do is go to their, those people individually and meet their concerns. Well, my concern caught him off guard there when he came to my place and spoke to me. I own land on both sides of it. I live in subdivision there, where this will affect it, prices of homes in this and another. I own the eight and a half acres there below it. It is zoned agriculture. It is in a good location for this unit. Because of the up and down elevation, the county school board didn't use it because that, that reason, that's why it's up and downhill there. If they do get a fire call in town, they're coming off that hill, and that speed bump's not going to make any difference if they're coming out on Route 55 with all the traffic. This isn't a location to start building from agriculture, they're on top of the hill next to our subdivision. If you're going to notify everybody in our subdivision that you're building it up there, just a couple people around the edge, they would have been here tonight, and some of them are here because I invited them. So Jerry's done a fantastic job making a good presentation there. That isn't a location for it. The county must have land somewhere, five or six or eight acres in industrial area, where they can build this location and not have any opposition to it whatsoever. They do have $800,000 to spend, and I know it's burning in their pocket. Maybe they don't use it, they'll disappear. But I don't think this is a location. I own land on both sides of it. I spent $15,000 putting in a flue pot, I just will go out there tomorrow and spray it around, but if you build this facility, there'll be no more hunting, or fishing, or anything. Because that's what will take place on top of the hill there. And he did do a good job. Yeah, they don't want to use it 20 times a year, but two years from now, they'll be back here, and we'd like to use it 50 times a year. We'd like for Scammy to come and use it. We'd like for Lou Ray to come and use it. We'll all be back in this room again. It just isn't a location. It's agriculture. It's a great hill. I walk it once in a while. It takes the fat off it. But this isn't a place to build it, and I hope that you don't build it there. Thank you.
Smouse, is anyone else?
Larry Oliver.
Larry Oliver, 513 Hamilton Circle. I'm also the district chief for Front Royal Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department, which is part of the Warren County Department of Fire and Rescue Services. Certainly, this has been a long time coming. We've certainly have looked at different options. As a person that's been in the fire and rescue system in Warren County for now 40 years this year, I've had the opportunity as a student, as an instructor, to teach hundreds of live fire evolutions and burn buildings, fire structures, and everything else. Today, with trying to travel to any burn facility outside of Warren County is problematic for the entire system. Logistically, trying to get trailers and straw and all the things that we have to take to the facilities, and taking resources out of the area certainly is challenging, especially with limited number of people that we have every day in the system. Every day, there's 10 career people working, and volunteers are sporadic. That's not any new information that you already don't know. Everybody has jobs, everybody has lives and families that they want to participate in, so we have to make this the opportunity, not capability for our people. Is it the opportune location? Maybe not. But certainly, budgetary wise, and all the components that go along with it, it makes sense to start here, and then from that point, if there's a need, and as we grow, it's better to look from that point forward. We've lacked for probably the last five years, because Winchester's burn building was condemned, and it's under renovation or under new construction now. Shenandoah County has been gracious enough to lease theirs for our academies. Outside of that, trying to go somewhere else, Falkir, Prince William, Loudon, Fairfax, any of those is just unrealistic, especially with the numbers of people that we have today. It's a great opportunity to keep our people local. It's central when they want to do a shift training for their career people on duty. The town is central to every part of Warren County, so it's an opportunity. And I think it's a benefit that will see great dividends in the community by people understanding and knowing their jobs. Thank you.
Smouse, is there anyone else?
Mary Jones.
One thing that upsets me is.
Amen. Address please.
Mary Jones, 3 Mount Vernon Court. And this is my first time, so you have to give me a little grace. And that's the reason where we, where we live is about 100 yards from Colonia and Commonwealth. And that's, that's where the exit is basically, to get onto Route 55. So I'm concerned about, I don't know how many people are going to be taking it, and how, how traffic, traffic is going to be affected. It's a, it's a residential area. There are children, you know, living on Colonia, and I, what partly is, what irritates me more is that we weren't taught, we are people who might be affected because of our location. And nobody informed us. And I think some parents would have been here if they had been informed, people who live on Colonia especially. So just trying to do it better next time, because I think we will be affected. I know we will be affected by construction vehicles, but I'm concerned, that's mostly what I'm concerned about is traffic. Construction, we've had plenty of construction on Leach's, you know, I can't even say it, I'm sorry. Leitrone. We were affected by that, so we'll, so we're, you know, we're used to it. But, but please, you know, is there, is, I'd like to know how it will affect traffic? Has anybody done anything? Even if it's only 20 times a year? I don't know how many people are going to go there, if, are there people that are going to go, are there people that actually are there already? That's how I heard somebody say that there's a training place up there already. So how many more people are going to be taking that road? Because they're going to be going right on Colonia. So that's, that's something, please consider that.
This is something, I don't believe they're coming up Colonia.
Good.
They're not coming up, they're only going at the ESA side of the road, which is a little bit past, it's right about a town limit.
That is correct, but at the last planning zoning meeting, these people in the back spoke that as long as they didn't use the ESA road, they could go ahead and put it up there.
Did you come up and address for the?
Yes, I'm sorry. Don't mind that a bit. That is correct, Mr. Carter. You're very much so. But at the last planning and zoning meeting we had, it's understood that they do still have a right of way given to them by Mr. Marlowe through that subdivision. So if the ESA road for some reason couldn't be used, or they wanted a bigger piece of equipment to buck the hill with all those containers, they do have a right of way through that subdivision, and it can be used. And if the, the Canadian's a grove, they'll put two lanes on top of the hill up there and put a yellow line between them. That's exactly correct. That was their concern. Now, tonight Jerry's talked to them, put them a new pool in, put them a surrounding sound, put them a TV in the yard, they're not coming here to object to it. This isn't a location for this. And if everyone in our subdivision do what you're planning on doing, they'd have been here. But he's done a great job of not having them come back. Thank you.
Mr. Smouse, is there anyone else?
No, sir.
Is there anyone else who care to speak at this time?
Paul Abbott, 1221 Valley, U Drive. And this is kind of a sad situation. I mean, the Fire Department needs a place to practice and, and to get it right. But I think in this case, you have to respect the, the citizens. It's, it's them that's going to pay for it through the smoke, through the noise, through everything else. They shouldn't be put through something like this. You should find a different place to do it. There's plenty of other, of the land that the county owns, or whatever. I wouldn't want it near mine, and I don't think any of y'all would want it near yours either. So that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Smouse, is there anyone else? Is there anyone else who care to speak? Is there anyone else who care to speak at this time?
Hi, good evening. I'm Catherine Muszieski. I live at 1743 Weg of Commonwealth. My biggest concern about this, I think it's a good project for training, I think it's a good idea, my biggest concern though, is with the live fires, what is the guarantee that the fire won't get out of control? It's a very heavily wooded area up there, and that's my biggest concern with the fire. It's only 20 times a year, but what you need is one fire to get out of control. And I understand these are volunteers that are learning, and also career firemen that are continuing their education or whatever it is, but that's the only thing I'm concerned about, is that the fire is out of control.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? Please.
Mr. Chair, Jerry Laattico, 157 Runmount View Road. I'm here today as, as the taxpayers. I talked to you at budget time, the Board's made great strides in capital and human investments in our fire and rescue department, with our career and volunteer system. This is a, this is a move that our fire and rescue system, as a volunteer member that joined in 1997, I was one of those volunteers that traveled outside of the county to obtain my base level of training. Certainly, I understand the detriment to our, our volunteer responders, as we talk about our, our community DNA, bedroom community, and that's certainly affecting our volunteer system. So any amount of time that we can alleviate on the stressors of our volunteers in their every.
Can you put that in, that they would not use that right-of-way for the...
I could put in that we have, I have that the county would be responsible for the maintenance of the road of ESA Lane and that the property will be accessed by ESA Lane.
Just to make sure, they would not be, and I don't see that happening anyway.
We would only use the subdivision road should somebody in that subdivision have an emergency.
Right. It would be used for training. You would just pay for ESA, but I just didn't know it would be a level of comfort if you kind of tied it up a little bit more. And then that way, if it did happen in the future, there would be another public hearing for people to voice their concerns, but I don't see that happening.
We can't physically use, I mean, it's grassed over. I mean, so while there may be a better gravel underneath of it, it's grassed over. We would not take our apparatus on that road. So certainly, ESA Lane is our road of choice. There's no objection to the adjoining property owners on ESA Lane.
Yeah, I don't see that other roadway as being an issue. I mean, I don't see it ever used on.
So how long have you all been using this? You've been using it for some other...
Three years now.
Three years, ma'am?
So we've been using the classroom trailers on-site for three years for our weekly and monthly training events. So yes, sir.
And have you had any complaints?
We have none.
People didn't know you were there?
We'd like to think they didn't, but I mean, you know, we had a speeding issue with one student with the adjoining property owner. That was his concern, is to reach for the speed bump. We addressed that with our volunteer member and no additional complaint since then. So certainly, yeah, we've had no significant complaints. The adjoining property owners have mine, Chief Mady's business guard with cell phone numbers, so any event that, you know, we're available 24 hours a day should they have the concerns.
Any other questions? Try this again. Anyone else who would care to speak? Is there anyone else who would care to speak?
Paul Abbott, 1221 Valley U Drive. This is kind of a sad situation. I mean, the fire department needs a place to practice and to get it right, but I think in this case, you have to respect the citizens. It's them that's going to pay for it through the smoke, through the noise, through everything else. They shouldn't be put through something like this. You should find a different place to do it. There's plenty of other land that the county owns or whatever. I wouldn't want it near mine, and I don't think any of y'all would want it near yours either. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time?
Hi, good evening. I'm Catherine Muszyneski. I live at 1743 Webb Commonwealth. My biggest concern about this, I think it's a good project for training, I think it's a good idea. My biggest concern, though, is with the live fires. What is the guarantee that the fire won't get out of control? It's a very heavily wooded area up there, and that's my biggest concern with the fire. It's only 20 times a year, but what you need is one fire to get out of control. And I understand these are volunteers that are learning and also career firemen that are continuing their education or whatever it is, but that's the only thing I'm concerned about with the fire is not in control.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Anyone else care to speak, please?
Mr. Chairman, 157, we're going to come here today as taxpayers. I've talked to you a bunch of times. The boards make great strides in capital and human investments in our fire and rescue department, our career and volunteer system. This is a move that our fire rescue system, as a volunteer member that joined in 1997, I was one of those volunteers that traveled outside of the county to obtain my base levels of training. Certainly, I understand the detriment to our volunteer responders as we talk about our community DNA, bedroom community, and that's certainly affecting our volunteer system. So any amount of time that we can alleviate on the stressors of our volunteers in their everyday life is certainly a benefit to recruiting and retaining those members. Just a couple of things. The department does not have $800,000. When I say we have state monies to spend, we have enough to fund the project. No more, no less. The chief has the all of that. So we've been able to earmark enough to pay for the infrastructure, i.e. the concrete pad and the actual training building. And that is if cost projections come in as we plan. Outside of that is certainly, we do take the precautions. It is a heavily wooded area. There is a field, but we are putting in a concrete buffer. We will have fire apparatus. While it is training, all the training goes under certified instructors, long-term seasoned members. The smoke production, again, we don't envision that this is going to impact the community. And if the conditions are right, i.e. moisture in the air that's going to keep the smoke low, wind conditions, certainly, we would make those reasonable accommodations to postpone training. Again, a vote in favor of this project is certainly a vote in favor of your fire rescue department, your career and volunteer system, and we look forward to your support.
Good question. I know that there's a right-of-way through Colonial, but could that be used right now? My understanding is...
The infrastructure's not there for us to use it with our apparatus. It's grassed over. There are significant concerns with that right-of-way. I guess from my understanding, talking to the people affected. What happened to Planning Commission is one of the neighbors showed up with a letter, a memorandum dated 1979 saying, hey, you can use ESA Lane, but when Mr. Marlowe builds the subdivision, you can have a right-of-way through the subdivision. That was for the construction of a new high school on top of that lane because that was the school system's envision at the time. So that would take into account the traffic counts associated with a large school building. Since then, I think the county's been able to research that there is a right-of-way for ESA Lane, so we can use ESA Lane. Certainly, ESA Lane is the road of choice for us. It's straight. If we use the subdivision road, we have two significant turns to navigate. It would take substantial improvements to improve that roadway infrastructure that certainly is outside of the cost projection. So that's why we have strived to meet the concerns of the immediate properties on ESA Lane that's going to see the biggest effect. We talk about traffic counts. Our typical average fire academy running 15 to 20 volunteers, they are encouraged to carpool anywhere from a, more from a camaraderie standpoint in the apparatus associated with that training event. At the most, you may be looking at 20 to 25 vehicles. We've gone as far as saying to limit siren usage, there's no reason to blow the siren on ESA Lane, certainly unless traffic is extremely heavy on John Marshall Highway, rush hour traffic. So we've made those provisions with our staff to just be courteous in the event of an emergency to drive with due regard, or required to do that by law as today.
Could I ask another question, maybe to Tanner? Are private citizens using ESA Lane now?
Yes, ma'am.
So there are thousands, several.
I mean, there's not a lot. I think some of the citizens who spoke live in the subdivision, and that was kind of some confusion that Planning Commission heard at their meeting because of the letter to access a possible high school a long time ago all through the subdivision road. And I understand their concerns about, you know, fire trucks going through the subdivision as well, but this would not be accessed that way. This would be through ESA Lane. I can add that into the conditions, but I mean, they would have to, it would be a large investment to build an access road into the property.
And also, there's a turn at the end as you get on ESA Lane to go up the hill. I don't see how a fire truck could even make that turn.
We would not be able to currently today. We would not be able to make that turn off of that road.
Would you be needing to, I mean, to get to where the burn building is?
No, ma'am. We didn't use ESA Lane, not needed right-of-way, as well as the agreements that we came to to the affected property owners with driveways off of ESA Lane. So there are no current plans to utilize the subdivision's access road where right-of-way we would use ESA Lane.
So do we have complaints from the property owners off of ESA?
We had concern and we've come to terms with those property owners.
Can you put that in, that they would not use that right-of-way for the...
I could put in that we have, I have that the county would be responsible for the maintenance of the road of ESA Lane and that the property will be accessed by ESA Lane.
Just to make sure, they would not be, and I don't see that happening anyway.
We would only use the subdivision road should somebody in that subdivision have an emergency.
Right. It would be used for training. You would just pay for ESA, but I just didn't know it would be a level of comfort if you kind of tied it up a little bit more. And then that way, if it did happen in the future, there would be another public hearing for people to voice their concerns, but I don't see that happening.
We can't physically use, I mean, it's grassed over. I mean, so while there may be a better gravel underneath of it, it's grassed over. We would not take our apparatus on that road. So certainly, ESA Lane is our road of choice. There's no objection to the adjoining property owners on ESA Lane.
Yeah, I don't see that other roadway as being an issue. I mean, I don't see it ever used on.
So how long have you all been using this? You've been using it for some other...
Three years now.
Three years, ma'am?
So we've been using the classroom trailers on-site for three years for our weekly and monthly training events. So yes, sir.
And have you had any complaints?
We have none.
People didn't know you were there?
We'd like to think they didn't, but I mean, you know, we had a speeding issue with one student with the adjoining property owner. That was his concern, is to reach for the speed bump. We addressed that with our volunteer member and no additional complaint since then. So certainly, yeah, we've had no significant complaints. The adjoining property owners have mine, Chief Mady's business guard with cell phone numbers, so any event that, you know, we're available 24 hours a day should they have the concerns.
Any other questions? Try this again. Anyone else who would care to speak? Is there anyone else who would care to speak? We are supposed to speak one time in a public hearing. It's supposed to be limited. He's answering questions. He can't go twice.
Okay. It's up to the board. Whether they're going to wave the road or not and allow them to speak.
I was going to say, usually, what we've done is nobody can speak twice until everybody has a chance to speak once.
Yeah.
And my understanding is there's nobody else out there that wants to come forward?
If that's the case, I don't have any problem.
Mr. Keller wants to come forward?
Mr. Keller's right, Ruth, if you met him, you would like him. I can let him off once in a while, and he has to go home. I'm Blaine. Yes. I want to make sure of that. I'm Blaine Keller. I appreciate Jerry. What a salesman. Should have got his insurance license. I appreciate that. Again, the thing you're getting at is, yes, now they're using it for educational. They're in the classrooms up there. I'm the land below it, I'm the land on the side of it. I know what's going on. You hook a fire hose, a water hose, a fire truck up there, now you're dealing with a whole different world, a whole different process, a whole different... And you spend $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 up there working, and I say to you again, this isn't a location. It's very steep. It'd be hard to get off there for the training, hard to get off there in traffic on Route 55. This isn't the location. If you have an accident in town and they're coming off there for a fire because they've got a fire in town, you can't get by the traffic. This is not the location for this property up there. It is agriculture, used for educational, that's fine. No one's got a body. Go up and have a classroom. Go up and have, and they're moving. He wanted, he said, we've got classrooms here. They're moving. Let's put fire trucks in them and move them if you have to. This isn't the location for that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? Third and final call. Public hearing is now closed. Where is the board's pleasure?
I'm new at the board supervisor. I was approved a condition on use permit request. The county warned for a fire rescue training facility, but the condition is recommended by Planning Staff.
Second.
Mr. Carter, could we please have a roll call?
We're going to have a...
Well, opportunity for, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, if you will, Mr. Chairman. Are there any plans to improve that ES road going up to that west, the fire marshal?